Thank you for being patient. We're going to call the Board of Education meeting into order. Please stand for the pledge. And, press defeat.
The United States of America and to the fellow who stands for our nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's get started. Adoption and approval of the agenda. Approval of the agenda for May fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. Do I have a motion?
I'm going to approve.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, and then we move on to the good part. Special recognitions, reports, and presentations. And we've got student reports from Casa, Petaluma High, San Antonio, Valley Oaks, and Crossroads. So let's start with Casa.
Hi everyone, I'm Holly Bean-Ronstadt. I'm one of the co-presidents at Casa Grande High School for next year. Unfortunately, my partner in crime and co-president, Eva Isola, couldn't be with me tonight because she's working and doing smart person stuff. So I am here to show you what we're doing at Casa Grande, which is a lot. So, on April twenty-sixth, we did Ask a Gaucho, which is where we went to Kettleworth and we answered any questions that the kids had about coming to Casa because it can be pretty scary to go to a high school and not know anything about what's going on, not know where your classes are, not know what classes should I take, what teachers should I get, or what subjects, how can I fit in to the culture? And I told them Casa's really accepting. Casa's awesome. With that kind of stuff, there's a place for everyone. All the teachers are great. And I had so many of my leadership friends with me and some non-leadership people from different groups to answer questions from anything from sports to drama, to music, to anything they wanted to know. We have some pretty awesome senior projects going on. Emily Armist, Casa senior and one of my friends, who is awesome, hand-painted multiple pairs of shoes and sent them to an orphanage in Haiti. I thought that was so wonderful to do. It's so simple, but it makes such an impact. That picture just says it all. Happy little girls, it's so sweet. It makes me so happy. And all the seniors are going to present their senior projects next week, Monday or Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Yeah, May twenty-first, doesn't have the date of the week on it. And if y'all want to stop by, the Casa Jazz Bands are playing some awesome music in UMU too. Fifty-one Gauchos have earned the seal of By-Literacy. That is really awesome. They have achieved literacy in three languages. I can barely speak the one. English, Spanish, and French. I can't even imagine. So there are just some of the students that have achieved By-Literacy, which is amazing. And the Big House Catering Club, catering one county. That is so awesome. And I don't let people think about catering as something that you win. I never knew before I went to Casa that you could win catering competitions, but they did it. They got judges' choice and people's choice, also known as popular choice award. And the winning menu spent we served at the senior project showcase. So see some awesome senior projects. Open house, grab a bite, and listen to the jazz bands. And Davy Muse came to our school. I saw Davy Muse when I was a freshman at our leadership convention that we held in Santa Rosa. And we loved him so much that we wanted him to come back to Casa to talk to all of our students about how he found himself through music, how he got over so many struggles and hardships and came to be the person that he is. He was such a wonderful guy to meet, such a wonderful speaker. And from what I've heard from the student body, they all loved him. He was wonderful. And the Gaucho Gazette received a lot of awards too. The Gaucho Gazette is our newspaper, which is written by some of the most talented Gauchos at our school. They won Best Overall Student Newspaper, which is so awesome. I'm so happy for them. And also won for Online Excellence, Best Design Layout. And congratulations to Ms. Couch and all the awesome journalists. I know like almost all those kids, which really shows you that they have a really strong presence in Casa, they're really important. And AP Testing began in May sixth and all the students are taking their tests. All of my tests were today. I had two tests and I looked at the little form and I said, "Oh my god, they're on the same day." But we got through them. We did it. Almost did. See, this summer, people are going off to college and getting their AP credit in. So, congrats to them. And US News Best High School twenty nineteen, Petaluma made the list. That's so awesome. We are such an amazing school district. We have so many different opportunities for kids to learn, for kids to experience. Awesome thing. We have a lot of people passing, taking AP exam, really proficient in reading, pretty proficient in math. And we have a great graduation rate of ninety-four percent. Thank you so much for listening to the Casa Grande site report for this month. I hope to be here again very soon.
And we hope to see you. All right, Petaluma, come on down.
Hello, I'm Gloria Villalobos, A.C., Vice President and San Sphere Captain. So we're going to be going over a little bit of what we've done over the past couple months, but there's a lot. Like she mentioned, there's a lot been going, that's been going on, especially with the school year ending. So much is paddling out. So those up there are just a couple of the events that we've had. So we've had a pasta feed for the Wildlife Museum. As you guys know, the Wildlife Museum is actually growing. It's becoming a lot more of a prominent thing on campus. Paul Leoni also went to state for his speech competition. I don't know if you remember from our last presentation, but he did win first in district and he went all the way up to state. We also had our now turning into annual chalk art competition to help honor those art students who don't, perhaps don't get a lot of recognition. We also had a BSA City Light Dance, JSA Summit, which is a lot of work for those JSA students, bringing all of all those people in and having activities planned for them. We had PEF Awards. We have more awards. Takata won the Teacher of the Year Award as well. And last Saturday, I believe, we had the River Cleanup, which is something that Takata does to help the community. We have Rodeo F volleyball. We recently had our Spring Musical. And just to shine a light on our staff members, we had a salsa competition two weeks ago. It was a salsa and guac competition this year.
Oh, I got family.
So this is the pasta feed. As you can see, a lot of people showed up just to support the Wildlife Museum, which like I said, they're bringing in more artifacts, more animals, stuff like that. And it's really starting to become the program that it was meant to be from the beginning. It's really starting to build it up a little bit more. And I'm honestly really proud of being at a school that has this kind of like museum on it. So the Neon Spring Dance, it was one of the more successful spring dances that we've ever had. Spring dances usually fall short because people don't want to show up like closer to the end of the year, right? But moving the neon dance towards the spring actually helped us bring a lot of people in. And we had a lot of fun using neon lights, which didn't cost us anything because we had already bought them previously for rabbits. So FFA, the thing about our FFA program is that it's really strong. It's really an amazing program. Every time they go to competition, I swear they get first place in something. Like it doesn't matter what, but they always win first place in something. And that's honestly pretty amazing because these competitions can be fierce, but they always come home bringing some kind of award. So Press Democrat Awards twenty nineteen. This is for the Youth Service Awards. Like every year, we had ten nominees go. We had one student, Lucas Cheetah, and that was for his help. He won in the Ag Department because of his help during the wildfires. He actually helped a lot of animals. He helped set up shelters. He helped build homes for them. And yeah, this shows how great of a guy he is. He got the thousand dollar scholarship just for doing community service. How many Family Community Achievement Awards? It's the first time in years that that was reintroduced back to Petaluma High School. Our winner this year was Ethan Chabaisian, which is one of our invaluable coins at Petaluma High School. Another little thing about these awards, we also honor our top ten students from each class at these awards. And I know personally, from knowing a couple of them, that they were really happy to be kind of recognized for all their hard work. So PEF Night. Unfortunately, I was unable to make the event because it was the same day as Press Democrat Awards. However, from all the students that went, I know that they felt glad that they were recognized for everything that they've done, how hard it worked. It's kind of hard being a student not feeling recognized. So they wanted to go out there. So PEF Awards really helped them step on up there. So BSA City Light Dance. So BSAs are bilingual student ambassadors club on campus. And we have recently started doing this dance in the spring or in the fall, however, may fall. That was not a pun, but. So yeah, so this year, we had a nice little product going in. So it's basically just a fundraiser, but at the same time, it's a community event to help tie in teachers with bilingual students and their families. And we also offer extra credit to students from the Spanish classes who want to immerse themselves more into the culture. And it really helps to have all the bilingual student ambassadors there because they could bring in people who don't necessarily speak English, make them feel a little bit more welcoming.
Is that related to Metra?
No, so BSA and Metra is completely separate on our school. BSA is a little bit more leadership oriented, whereas Metra's a little bit more political. But yeah. And then we also had every fifteen minutes this year. We had a very intense rally the Friday of. And a lot of people were emotionally kind of like, they felt it, which is the whole point of doing the every fifteen minutes program. As a participant, I could say that I could see why we do the program and I'm thankful that we still have it around. So the JSA Summit, like I said, it's a lot of work getting all those students there. It's a lot of work, like putting all those activities together, keeping everyone focused for so long. Especially as teenagers, we all know how hard it is to focus for that long. But the JSA team at Petaluma High School is really special. I know a couple of the seniors in it and I can tell you that they're very happy to be in the program and they're very proud to be in the program. Okay, so like I mentioned, like the Casa representative mentioned. Our Trojan Tribute, which is a school newspaper, also awarded four awards. I'm not sure what category they were in, but I've seen a lot of them hanging in their classroom. So yes, they do win them annually. And this is just a happy team giving their awards. So forgot to change that. It was a chalk art competition slide. So we also had a visit from a Holocaust survivor just to let us know her story. It was part of the World History Class kind of deal. And a lot of students who participated or wanted to go hear her scoop were really impacted by it and now they understand why they're learning about history in their classes. Because it really did happen and there's still people around who had to go through those troubles sort of. So like I said, we've been so busy, so, so busy. We have the musical. We also honored our neighbors who helped us out a lot, just getting things done around the school. And we're really thankful for them. We're also starting to open our student store. Entrepreneurship has started up the store again and they are open right now, although they're not very prominent as of yet because they just recently opened. Yeah, and then that's a picture of our Wildlife Museum teaching little kids about animals and stuff. It's really nice for them to be able to get that hands-on kind of like petting, seeing them in person. I know because I went to Liquid Elementary and they do an annual field trip to the Wildlife Museum. And it was really special to be able to go someplace local where the students may have been someone that you knew when you were in kindergarten. Okay, so sports. So these are our next games. So softball is really doing very, very well. At the moment, it's leading Redwood by five to one. Badminton also is doing really, really well, or did really, really well. They won the first pennant in leading in fifteen years. And the eighteenth is its first CIX tournament. We had two qualifying dual members. It was Jacob Sullivan and.
Where's the baseball angle? Is it Casa or Petaluma?
I'm not sure.
Casa, thanks.
Thank you.
Probably going to rain.
It's tomorrow night.
Tomorrow.
Hopefully it's a solid.
Well, it probably will.
So upcoming events, graduation is June first. We have our Senior Sunset coming up this Thursday. Finals are about to happen. And I put AP Testing on upcoming events because it's not over. A lot of us been wish it was over. It's not over. But yeah. And then prom of the twenty-sixth, senior rally is next week. Car Show is this Friday, actually. Car Show and yearbook distribution. It's a really special day for us, especially getting to see that big grandmaster that they bring every year. And Coward Club Football is also going to start this week, which is basically like a class competition of football.
When's the car show?
When?
When's the car show?
What is it?
When?
When? This Friday.
This Friday.
Yes, this Friday. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's hear from San Antonio.
Hi. My name's Zoe.
I'm on break.
Um, I'm already. And today we're here at Casa Grande High School.
So like I said, my name's Alberto and I am currently attending at San Antonio High School. Before I went to San Antonio, I went to Casa Grande. I had trouble focusing on my classwork. Didn't have much of support from the teachers. And I was really struggling. I was set for credit physically when I got to San Antonio. I felt as if I was embraced by the school really fast. And to me, it feels like a family, you know? It feels like a community that you can get along with and that you can, you know, always count for support. The teachers here at San Antonio, they really pay attention to you. They really support you and they they want you to do better. And that's what the school is all about. And the classes at San Antonio are short and small, which has helped my mind today be more organized and more efficient in my classwork. When I'm at San Antonio, I feel safe from how well I know each classmate. We, each, each one of us create bonds with each other. We create friendships. It's not just like you go to school and you just say hi to them, you know, like just something that's bystander. You go to school and you meet the same faces, you see the same faces. And it's just, it's something else. It's like, it's like you come to school, and for me, at least, I feel like I'm going to somewhere that I'm safe, that I can count on the teachers, I can get my work done, and also just have fun, you know? There have been twenty-four students recently this year, earlier this year, that have graduated and more to come. And I'm very proud of these students. Each individually, they all thought they couldn't make it at Normal High School, but at this alternative high school, it shows you something that you didn't see when you were, you know, at Normal High School. And that's something that I really like about San Antonio is that it shows you kind of hope and a life for graduating. And that's, that's something that I enjoy at San Antonio.
At San Antonio, we have a lot of different school activities. Our teachers try and get us really involved with our school center. There's not a lot of opportunities to do lots of like cool things, but like get us going. We have had lots of Christmas clubs. We got to make gingerbread houses for Christmas time for a competition. I don't know if you know that or not, but it was really cool. We got to make fun, go on Valentine's Day. We had a buy of reality from River Credit Union and it was pretty much just a program that taught us how to kind of organize our expenses in the future. It was real cool. We had a pasta feed back to school night earlier in the year. And that was really cool because we all got to make like lots of pasta and share it with everyone. We got to serve it and wrap. Get a credit for doing that. It just happened. We had the cops come to our school. Our, the cops that represent our school came to our school and did a little presentation for us, telling us how like workstation stuff. On Halloween, we had we had the music teacher from our school and he played guitar. He's now a music teacher at our school. So that's pretty cool.
He's the one that teaches guitar?
Yeah. It's really cool. At San Antonio, we have a basketball and soccer team. And they get to go on trips and play against other teams. It's a really cool opportunity for them. The soccer team tied most of the games this season. Basketball team didn't do as good, but we still had a lot of fun and it was a really cool experience for them. They got to go to a Kings game on field trip. The basketball team, they got to play on the court too. That was special for them. Yeah. It was really nice. So at the end of the year, we went to go to the Milwaukee Storm Festival and saw the Heat game. We got to see it before it even came out in the year. So that was a really special one. And we, the men actors came out and did a little Q and A with everyone. And that was cool because all of us got to take pictures with them. It was awesome. We went to go see Sony Todd at the Sonoma State University. And that was cool because a lot of our students haven't really seen any musicals, you know? It was a new thing in experience for everyone. That was really special to get to go and see that. Our science class went to go to the hattery and what's?
A warm spring.
Yeah. Over there. They grew little fish in their classroom and we got to release them right over there. It was really, it was really cool because they were so cute. They were like, you got to see the girls all the time. It was really nice. And our big field trip at the end of the year was Safari West. And it was, it was so fun. Because we got to see lots of animals. We got to see giraffes. We got to see some cool birds, some monkeys.
Beaver islands.
All right, so the teachers at San Antonio, don't even get them started, dude. They are amazing. I would like to like, can we give them like a round of applause?
Can they stand up?
Oh, yeah, please stand. Each one of them, I have a close relationship with them. They, at the beginning of the year, I was kind of low on credits and they boosted me so, so much. They gave me the confidence, they gave me the self-esteem. They helped me, they supported me. And each one of them is amazing in their own subject. So we have Ms. Marilla teaching biology. She's also teaching US history and also teaching world history. Okay, yes, world history and what was? It's John. I've only had Ms. Marilla for both of those classes. Each one, I'm pretty sure I yes, I passed. I passed those. I'm currently taking biology and I learned something that I didn't really know. And that's birds actually are like, came from dinosaurs. And that's really, really cool. Like it's something that I did not know. And that's something that she taught me. And that, I'm really, really like glad that I know now. We have Ms. Chiquini that does English twelve, English EOD, film with literature and music. That helps. And women's, women's literature. Which is fantastic class. I haven't been in it, but I heard it was nice. I've been in film with literature and EOD and English twelve. I took English twelve with Ms. McGary. Ms. McGary teaches English twelve, arts workshop, right? Workshop.
Writers workshop.
Arts workshop and
Phoenix flyer.
Oh yeah, the Phoenix flyer is with the arts workshop. Writers workshop, okay. Each of them, I've learned a lot. I know I've said that a lot, but like, it really shows, you know? Like it really shows in my progress as a person and as a student that if it wasn't for them, I wouldn't, I would say I wouldn't be really going to school frequently. They, they are making me go to school and wanting to go to school. I would also talk about, I also want to talk about Mr. Smith. He's not here. But, and Grisbeck, Ms. Grisbeck. They're both, recently, they have both given me so much support, especially Mr. Smith. I can't even start where I started with my friendship with him and, you know, this bond that I have with him as a student and as a teacher, you know, as him being a teacher. He's taught me a lot, a lot of math over the time. Oh, he also does classes, computer science, math, after trades, and he's also the coach. Right? Yeah, the coach.
He's a coach for sports teams.
Of sports teams.
Yeah. Both of those sports teams. They like to get to know their students really well, obviously, because it's a small school, they have that opportunity. And they honestly feel like family, like a lot. It's really cool because we get to have these kinds of relationships with our teachers that you don't get to have at the big schools. More because they have so many students, they have other priorities, you know? So it's really awesome to have them be there for us because they make us feel successful and they help us engage in class, which is sometimes hard for a lot of the students.
I would also like that, I didn't mention this, but Ms. Burroughs. And we also have, Ms. Burroughs is a Spanish teacher. Ms. Garcia is an art teacher, art one, art two, right? Okay, and Carhartt, that works with social studies.
Specialized, specialized.
Specialized.
And this is a video that I put together. I was asking some students why they enjoyed San Antonio.
What do you like about San Antonio?
Honestly, the environment. I feel like it's not really school. It's more like
I like how the teachers are very supportive. It's a small school, so we all know each other. It's like a little family. And we all love each other.
I like San Antonio because everyone here is like, just like a family. We're all just friends. We just cooperate from each other's school and I don't, not forsake that school.
I like San Antonio because compared to the schools like Casa Grande, Petaluma, the teachers here actually take time to build a relationship with each student. So, you know, you go just
Thank you guys, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dan Fraca. I'm sixteen years old and I've been at Valley Oaks since the second semester of freshman year. And this is my story about how I came to be at Valley Oaks. I first learned of Valley Oaks in my second semester of eighth grade. I first learned at Valley Oaks in my second semester of eighth grade when one of my best friends was very depressed and anxious. And he ended up graduating from Valley Oaks at the end of the year. Six months later, I was diagnosed with IBS, which is here, which means Hierosmal syndrome. Uh, IBS is an umbrella term, which in general means you get a lot of severe pain in the large and small intestine. This is exacerbated by certain foods, like chocolate or sugary foods. It's exacerbated by stress and also hormonal changes. And I'm a teenager, so like. During this time of my life, I was extremely sad and lost. I went from being a straight A student who loved going to school, missing half the last semester of the grade. That summer we went to Europe, which normally would have been a great trip, but I've always, my mind was always divided between the great, like, Europe's great, but then also where's the bathroom and my stomach is retarded. When I started Petaluma High School, it was much more stressful than my middle school. After a few months of struggling to keep my attendance and grades up, I ended up, um, I ended up looking into like other schools like Valley Oaks. Um, my best friend recommended Valley Oaks to me, but when I first met with his loft, she told me my grades were too low. Then I met too many audiences, um, for like, Valley Oaks to accept me. I told her I wouldn't miss Valley Oaks classes because they were very short. And I've made a promise by the end of the semester, I would have all my grades up to at least a C. She said if I could do that, Valley Oaks would accept me. And I'm here now, so I met my. As soon as I started, yeah. As soon as I started attending Valley Oaks, the shorter appointments, one-on-one with the board of teachers, like you meet with teachers one-on-one, like it's hard not to develop a nice relationship with them. Um, there's a flexible schedule and it's, it all just leads to a much less stressful environment. Um, and then after, by the end of the year, I had straight A's and I was, I didn't miss a single day of class. Uh, and then, um, next year, I was planning on going, returning to, um, Petaluma High School. And my short-term academic goal is just to finish, um, high school, Petaluma High School. Um, for college, I'm planning on going to UC Berkeley, um, yeah. And, um, my classmate Henry, please welcome him.
My name is Henry Wilson. I'm a freshman at Valley Oaks. I've been in the pedal of a school district for my whole life, but only at Valley Oaks for just over a year. Just under a year since transferring from Petaluma High. I chose Valley Oaks because at other high schools, I felt some classes would either drag on for ages or go by and I'd get lost in the dusk. But at Valley Oaks, I'm able to work more in depth on, uh, projects and take my time or I can just, let's do it if I want to do. Um, going to Valley Oaks has also allowed me to compete on the competitive rowing team with you and the rowing club.
We're cool.
And without Valley Oaks, I would have had to miss school on multiple occasions for out-of-town competitions in places such as Oregon and Folsom. I plan to continue growing next year and Valley Oaks' flexible schedules will definitely help me with that. I'm also excited for the ability to co-enroll at Santos as a junior college and be able to get my language credits there as a Valley Oaks student. I'm glad there is an alter, alternative pathway through high school as the traditional one was not working for me. And I'm excited to be a Valley Oaks graduate here as a student. Hi, I'm Henry Wilson. I'm a freshman at Valley Oaks and I'm a creator of this video.
Hi, I'm Jamie Johnson. I'm a sophomore at Valley Oaks and I'm a creator of this video. Here we have Miss Mom to the office. She is, she helps our school run some different high standards. One new policy being brought to our school this year is that every student must create online work portfolio. And they must present them at all of the houses. Here's Mr. Jameson's office. He has a monthly counselor to update email and make sure to make effort to spend time with every student and talk about their goals. Mr. Jameson, what is your favorite part of being a counselor at Valley?
A third part about being a counselor at Valley Oaks is trying to figure out ways to, uh, meet with every student, um, trying to get, and I love to, because every student has a unique situation, trying to figure out a way to connect with them and make sure that they're not isolated or, uh, but it is intense study that they're not isolated.
Thank you so much. We just had our second garden party for everyone who's been to Valley. The good community service project for students here and have to have a great town. Here is our first of the week for our social sciences and sciences are taught by Ms. Secretary. What's your favorite thing about being a Valley Oaks student?
I really, really like how it works for me. Things are so much more flexible and look like how I'm ready, whatever I'm interested in.
Thank you. Here we have some artwork done by our students with Ms. Garcia, our. Here we have some items with our school logo. Here we have one of our science teachers, this is Parker. Ms. Parker, what's new for you this year?
Well, in these years, that every science student has to use the engineering design process in their science or project. So all students have to build or create something, but.
What's your favorite thing about being a Valley Oaks student? Here we have San Antonio, that our P E courses have to use and check.
So this is Ms. Garcia. She is one of our art teachers at Bath and Vali.
So this is one of your favorite projects you've done this year?
Well, my favorite project is, is Patrick's, his art expression. And what's really fun is, uh, most students, even though you guys are very young, um, you tend to already have a preconceived idea of artists to be around. And this project's really helping people to flow paint, to flash on paint, and it really helps students to be more expressive. And I have students stand up for words, it's just a lot of fun. For me, that's the most fun, is to get the students to come in a little bit more timid and just to see them start to go.
So here we have Miss the Valley Demon. What's been up there and what's new here?
Well, at Valley Oaks last year, we had a new graduation requirement of community service, five hours every semester. And so in the garden, students have a chance to earn those five hours every semester. So you can see how beautiful it looks, all the work everyone's doing. It's really been wonderful. And students are doing community service projects and all the development and that just came out of the house.
This year, we have more science, medical, community, open judge, our second annual personal science fair, including our neighbors, the National Guard, Army, and our community company. Here we have Ms. Esrussa. Ms. Esrussa, what is your favorite thing about Valley Oaks?
Well, I like everything, nothing in the Valley Oaks, mostly like the students. I really get to learn a few types of students and, uh, not different grade levels. So it's, makes it very interesting to me and I enjoy getting to know them all more.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And last but definitely not least, let's hear from Crossroads.
Good evening. My name is Kane Venneloff. I'm an eighth grade student at Crossroads Alternative School.
Hello, my name is Omar Cruz. I am also an eighth grade student at Crossroads. We're here to talk to you about what has been going on at Crossroads this year.
This school year was a year of change for Crossroads. We started this, this school year with a new site and new buildings and a new name. We began Crossroads Alternative School. We bought a few pictures that are chronicle our school's instructions, starting with the groundbreaking all the way to the construction of our offices, our own district management staff. They put in some long hours to be able to get us open to August fifteenth.
The changing of site provided some new benefits for us as students that we did not have at our old site. We gained access to the San Antonio High School clinic, opportunities for lunchtime activities and sports as well as large group guest food. We're able to get up close and see US Representative Jared Huffman when he came to San Antonio. We also participated in the San Antonio High School wealth, uh, health, wellness and career fair.
By becoming an alternative school, we were able to access increased credit or new opportunities. As the year went on, we grew in population and increased the credits that we earned. The change in location and program itself helped us improve our school's attendance. In fact, attendance is up over twenty percent of the last year's students.
Crossroads has served twenty-five students this year in total and has helped me get back on track. I have made honor roll four times this year and we will be transitioning to Casa Grande High School in the fall. We would like to thank you for, to thank the board for that you are listening and for your support of alternative education. Thank you.
I think I speak for all of us. That was very impressive presentations. And it, it just, as a retired teacher, it just makes me so happy to see kids so enthusiastic about their schools and their teachers. So thank you for those great presentations.
Thank you. You guys are doing great.
Um, our next presentation? I thought we'd go through the presentations first or? Are they going to be on? Okay, we'll take a, we'll take like a three-minute break so kids can go home and study for those AP tests.
Oh, it's the art, the art student or the?
I'm sorry, what?
The art docent.
Are there students in the art docent?
Yeah.
Okay, then maybe we'll put off our break till after the art docent presentation.
Okay.
Erase, erase, reboot. People now hear from Elise Reece. Did I say that right? I'm always afraid of making one.
Good evening, hello.
Hi.
So I'm Elise Reece and I'm the coordinator of the art docent program. I'm going old school, uh, and I didn't take any AP tests today, but I did spend the whole day with TK in kindergarten. This is why I have these, I don't, my brain is not functioning a hundred percent. So, uh, the art docent program, uh, there's a lot of new faces here, so I just wanted to give you a little more information introduced to this special program, one of the many special programs that make art districts great. Uh, so we are a volunteer-based program that brings art education to seven schools plus the sixth grade academy at the Petaluma Junior High, TK through sixth grade. And so, uh, since really it's all about the kids, I thought I would bring two representatives of our, um, most important in my opinion stakeholders in all of this. So this is Ruby and Louis and, uh, actually they're going to talk a little bit about their art for a second. Ruby, why don't you go first?
So, in my class at my school, um, I go to grant and I am in the humanities class. And we have many art students come into our class and do different projects. And this is one that we did. And we also, this is one that we did, we made a lot of working with things. And if you don't know, working with things turns red, orange, yellow, green, blue and yellow, violet. And we also did other projects with like shapes and chalk and pastels. And a lot with my mom and other people. And, um, and we, I love the art lesson program because, um, I like that the people that do it, they teach you. They don't give that to you all on your own. And it's very fun and you get, and you get to do it and you learn your art. So to me, the art lesson program is really just a way of teaching art. It gives a lot of techniques and, um, materials, um, different ways to draw, to do art. And, um, really what the teachers do, they just give with volunteers, they just give you the basics of it. And then off of that, you work off of it. So for this piece, um, they just gave us a cow. Yes, so they had us draw the cow. They taught us how to draw the cow. Then they kind of gave us the background for ourselves and we kind of just do really whatever we wanted to draw for in the background. Yeah.
So there was a little Petaluma history in there to me?
Um, um, another piece of art we just did, what was the piece of art that we just did?
Picasso's self-portraits.
Yeah.
We just did it the other day.
Yeah, I think we did, we did another art a few days ago. And, um, so what we did, we rolled the dice, depending on what you did, you would pick, it, or it would give, the, she would give you, um, like something to draw in it. And really it just gave you the base of it and you kind of drew off of that. You gave it the head, the eyes, you kept rolling and, um.
So for each facial feature, is it different?
Yeah.
So thank you.
Yeah, it gives you the base and then after that you can be more independent.
So you, so basically both of you, we plant the seeds and then you?
Water them.
So then we have, um, it's about the kids. So, um, Ruby, what, what Ruby did was she took the lesson that they did in the classroom, which was recorded and was inspired by it and did it at home too, which is really what we want. It's what it's all about. We're planting the seeds, watering them to grow. Louis, um, so right now we have, this year we had over ninety-three docents. It's a lot of volunteers, most of them returning. We have about a ninety percent return rate. And, uh, I always say, I never delete anyone from the context was because they always come back. So, you know, and some people teach one time a year, some people teach once a week. Um, so when I'm recruiting docents, I would say you don't need to have any art experience or any knowledge. You have to love children, number one. And you also have to value, um, an arts education and see that what's important, uh, to, to an arts education. So that's the core of our program. That's the philosophy that runs the whole thing is, um, we want to build these kids up. Uh, that's why a lot of the lessons, give them step-by-step instructions. It gives them the confidence to then go off and do their own thing. Um, so the program, it's important to us to be equitable, to have equitable access to every single child, um, from TK to sixth grade. I also, um, am in the works for talking with the, um, the PACS program at McKinley to help them beef up their art program. But it's that equitable access that's really important to us. Um, so in arts education and probably preaching to the choir, um, it sort of evens the playing field. So kids that struggle academically, socially, um, English learners, for an hour and a half, they're the same as everyone else or even better. And you can see it in their body language. Um, on Monday, I taught in a fifth grade class where there's a newcomer. He's Burmese. So there's a kid who is in a land where no, I have not found any Burmese people to help him. Um, he's at McDowell, so mostly the second language is Spanish. And you can see that typical thing of an English, uh, newcomer, English learner. Um, he was a little spacing out and the lesson that day was about onomatopoeias. So it's English language and grammar, but there was enough visual that you could just see his whole body relaxed and he had such a great time. He somehow managed to convey to me that the sound of the word that he loved to hear in English language was boom. So that's what he used for his collage. So that was a perfect example of, um, the importance of art in their classrooms. Um, so the other thing that art docent program takes seriously is our role, um, as community liaisons. Uh, we work hand-in-hand with Petaluma Art Center, uh, promoting, uh, visual thinking strategies. Um, in a nutshell, it's a program that teaches kids how to look at art and just use critical thinking to support their opinions about, um, about the piece that they're looking at. So we work with, um, Petaluma Art Center. And then of those ninety-three docents, uh, they're not all parents. Most of them are parents and they're a dedicated group of, of volunteers. But some are just community members that they don't have children in the, in the, uh, school district. Some of them don't have children. Some people are new to Petaluma. So that's an important component to have volunteers that are diverse. Plus, kids get tired of seeing parents come in and volunteer. It's nice to have older people or, um, you know, a, a variety of, of volunteers. Um, let's see, so the lessons themselves, uh, we fulfill the visual arts standards, uh, for the most part for a lot of the classrooms. And, uh, where I take a lot of time and effort into making sure that we're complying with that, with the skills that are, um, required by those standards. And then what we also do is we integrate and enhance the classroom curriculum. So for example, if sixth grade does ancient civilizations, we use a variety of mediums. So there's Mesoamerican clay masks or there's sixth grade partusches. Um, first grade, they have to do shapes and penguins. So we have this fantastic, uh, oil pastel penguin lesson. Probably you've seen because they end up hooking. So we have this fantastic oil pastel penguin lesson, probably you've seen because they end up looking like self-portraits somehow. The one year that every penguin looked like Obama, that was a good one. Long and skinny with funny things on their head. So we tie in with curriculum a lot of the time. But then sometimes there's just techniques that kids need to learn. They need to learn how to use watercolors. They need to experiment with different mediums. And so we also do STEAM lessons. So that's, I am a firm believer in STEAM, not STEM. The A is important and integrates in, whether it's TK's taking a million toilet paper tubes and building bridges, or, or, you know, more involved kaleidoscopes that the older kids do. So those are, are important in the, I offer over two hundred lessons for the teachers to choose from. They're all divided by grades and age appropriate and skill appropriate. The other thing, I hope I don't offend anyone, but with the advent of more and more technology, I very quickly noticed a decline in some small motor skills, scissors skills, rulers. So I've developed a lot, as I see skills that are sort of falling behind or they need a little beefing up, I'll create lessons that, that help with that. So, I mean, it's, it's everywhere that people say this, but it's, it's important to say again, that in arts education, really incorporates academic language, incorporates math, science, history, multiculturalism, which I think is important nowadays. And at the same time, kids don't know it, but they're really getting critical thinking skills. They're learning perseverance, problem solving, not being such perfectionists, which is this new generation. And in my mind, more importantly, or not more importantly, but creativity is, is important to foster. So all of that is sort of our philosophy behind the program. All of our lessons sort of revolve around that. And I do, I have to thank, first off, the community, because with their vote, I don't know how many years ago Measure D was, but the community overwhelmingly said art is important. And so thank you to all of you that pay taxes, partial taxes, because you helped fund this. Also, the teachers, they're super supportive. We go to almost every single classroom. And the ones that don't use the program, I hunt them down. And they assure me they are incorporating art. So as long as the kids are getting art, that's fine. The district for all their support, I really appreciate that. And we couldn't do it without the docents. I think my kids left, but as Ruby and Louis said, their parents are docents and have been for years. So I have an incredible group of docents. So thanks for helping us keep art in children's lives.
Can I ask you, how, how do you interface with the district? I mean, are, are you just go to individual teachers and ask to get into the classroom? Is there something that goes through, it serves, I mean, I'm trying to figure out, so you're paid for by taxes?
By parcel tax, right. And so each year, the.
I didn't even know we had this, so that's why I'm fascinated.
This is really good.
I'm so excited.
We're Measure D funded by the parcel tax. We're in the same package as a lot of other things, but libraries.
Libraries.
Used to be classroom size, but I think. Music. So we're in that, that umbrella. And, and so then I create the curriculum. When we had TOSSAs, I would collaborate with the TOSSAs, the teacher.
Special.
Love that name. And we have science TOSA, she would, she helped me incorporate science-based art lessons. And then there's Packet that goes out to all the teachers. And then they choose, they contact me, say what days they want, and I contact the docents. There's a lot of training. The docents are cut above your average volunteer. They're, they're dedicated and, and it's, it's not, no offense to cotton balls, snowmen, but we've sort of raised the bar. You could sort, you could see, these kids got it. They understood not only the process, but they understood that there was more to the process than the product. What are your thoughts, John?
Thank you so much.
Thanks for your time.
Now, we'll take a three-minute break. Get ready for your tests. Okay. We have your reading back order, now that all our students have escaped. And we have one more presentation, and that is from the science teachers, third-year interest presentation.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Lee Boys and I teach at Petaluma High. I think I've seen most of you at one point or another, but we have a new board. And so we were interested in sharing some of our ideas about things that have been sort of in the process.
And I'm Kelly Polly, and I'm department chair at Casa Grande and teach art biology and animal physiology.
So the conversation came up, gosh, back in twenty fifteen or something, when we first started talking about NGSS and how we were going to align Horstler, what was that going to look like? And then we decided to come and speak to you all tonight because buying new curricular materials came on the agenda. And so the elementary schools are piloting some things, the secondary folks have been looking, but we really haven't seen anything that meets our needs the way we would like it to. And part of the problem is that almost everything is designed around a three-year science requirement. So we wanted to try and tell you about that, and I don't know what you know. Please feel free to ask questions about NGSS and what's happening. So we were presented, thanks to Cliff, I guess you invited Anna down from SCO to talk to us about NGSS. And I liked her quote that, you know, we used to look at science as something very elite, that only a few people could learn. And that isn't true. You need to start early and you need to give kids foundation. We were just hearing from the art docent about incorporating science into STEM, into STEAM. And we sort of feel the same way, the more science, the better.
Absolutely. And it ties into so many different things, which is what this is showing in this pattern here, is seeing that science and the ability to think in a scientific way ties into so many of your daily lives, into your jobs, into your ability to speak to a group, to be able to incorporate and relate to many different avenues.
So you heard several of the students tonight talking about this process of practices and core ideas and cross-cutting curriculum that has become NGSS, so that all students will get all standards and not just the few that go on to take a third or a fourth year of science. But everybody will know how to do some engineering, how to look for patterns, how to be able to incorporate structure and function and compare the dinosaurs to the birds. Not be amazed by the fact that that is actually true. That they have some engineering and technology background, that they can look at art and space in context with where everything else is going on. So the green are what they call the cross-cutting concepts that go across all the different curricular areas. And then the practices are supposed to be incorporated into each and everything you do. If you look at things like using math, constructing explanations, arguing from evidence, those are things you would do across the curriculum anyway. And then the orange are the four categories, if you will, with engineering and technology really being incorporated into the other three life sciences, physical sciences, earth and space sciences.
And then the other part here in California is the environmental literacy, which is again, a part that all ties it all together and something we embrace very strongly here.
So the timeline, for those of, I don't know how aware you are of how this happened, but it started back in twenty fourteen, there was a revision and all these things have taken place. We're now down at full implementation, being expected with, the operational test was given this year. Our high school selected the eleventh graders to take this test. And so part of that is what brought up our conversation here today, because we know how many eleventh graders were in science and how many were not in science when we had to go to give this test.
So again, this is the progress of where we're at now. And really, we're, we have implemented quite a bit of this in our classrooms. We've already got several units, we've got it in the physical science, we've got it in the biology, we've got it across the curriculum. But we need to be able to move forward and figure out exactly how are we going to be able to address every student that they, every student not only knows that there's a standard, but that they actually live those standards? And how are they going to be able to graduate proficient in having exposure to those standards?
So we've kind of gotten to this place where in order to move forward and develop these courses, we need to know whether we're developing it on a two-year or a three-year or a four-year scale. So there are a lot of options being explored all around California, and we've looked at many of them, but no one is trying to do everything in two years. The high school teachers from both Casa Grande and Petaluma met in April. And we agreed that three years of science was really the only way to make this happen, so that all students would get all standards. And so they asked us to share this information. We knew that that was their general consensus about needing to change the graduation requirement from two years to three years in order for that to happen, because otherwise, some students are left out. We looked at several different course models, and I don't know that we've settled on a course model among everyone, but sort of a three-model that's, I'll show you in a minute, the different course models that are available, and you can do anything you want, but this one is the one that most closely meets, meets our needs, I think.
And it's more similar to what we are currently doing, but it also is one that we recognize that has the flexibility to still allow all of the other courses that we have that build on the sciences. And it's important also to realize that they can be concurrent in many cases.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
About earth science? So that's, that is usually like a freshman course? It's not a lab science, is it?
Not true here. We don't have.
We don't have it.
We don't have earth science. We have physical science, and it is a D lab science, UC approved.
As is earth science, too.
As is earth science. So the UCs ten years ago sort of shied away from earth science as a course because it didn't have the lab component and it wasn't rigorous enough. That no longer is the case, because as you see in these models, the NGSS high school models, all of them have earth.
Earth is recommended to be integrated in straight throughout. Because it does tie into so many different ways and you can teach it. And you can teach the chemistry, you can teach the physics, you can teach the life sciences with earth component. But there can be a separate one to the thousand.
And so you're talking for a three-year, that all three of those courses would have lab?
They would all be D-science. They are now, every science we teach is a lab.
Okay.
So they are all on the D. Yeah, they're all on the D.
I was just going to say, so you're kind of really flipping the system in a way, right? Because you're, you're taking physical science, it's always been that traditional freshman class, and putting it as a third year, is that what I'm reading there?
Not necessarily.
Oh, you did, so that's not necessarily how you're going to present it, earth science, biology, and physical science.
Correct.
But it seems like that, well, that's another conversation.
That's an additional conversation that needs, because we have those things called credentials we have to deal with. And so when you put that in line, then you have to see what, who and what can be taught at any given seat.
Because the physical sciences, as they're being described in NGSS, are not a freshman introductory course.
Okay, that's my question.
They're chemistry.
So it seems like that would really fit, though, if you have an earth science
Right.
as your freshman introductory class.
Or an integrated.
Out of your physical science.
Right. So you can see there are like five different models here, and then at the bottom, it says your customized model. So you can pretty much do whatever you want. But the, the three-course model at the top, which is what Nevada and TAM have adopted, has three courses which are defined in NGSS, you can go look at them. And they're called Physics in the Universe, so it is teaching physics through earth and space. And Susan Smith and I did it last year with the freshmen, and we were able to get through all of it with the freshmen, but it was a tough go with the physics. When you start time out, the physics of plate movement, it's a little bit much for freshmen to grasp. Then the course is called Chemistry of the Earth, so you're applying all of the chemistry principles to earth science. And then the third one is Living Earth, which is biology and earth science. That's the sort of traditional, integrated traditional, the last five years, what they've been talking about is a three-year model with integrated earth blended in with those other chemistry, physics, and bio. So that model, the first one that's up there, is sort of what California has been pushing. But when you read it, they also are pushing that whoever teaches physics in the universe needs a physics credential.
And there does still exist the four-year model as well, which keeps them as separate courses.
Which is in blue.
What is that sequence on the traditional?
Either way, so it depends where you are, if Aquaville starts with physics.
So if you look at this one here, here's where we're talking about the four-model sequence. It can be in any order, depending on what you feel is best for your given population, sort of.
We've been kind of looking at the second one, the NGSS appendix K. It's a three-course model, but not as integrated, so that someone with a biology credential would still be okay with the life science. And either physics or chemistry, you could teach either physics or chemistry. That's a little bit more like the four-year model. I mean, in an ideal world, I think we would all say you need four years of science to get rid of this stuff.
Depending on what field you're going into. Absolutely, and it would certainly be recommended for people that are going into a science-based career farther on, where it's double up in sciences, because that's going to be their passions anyway.
So then would it impact, do your high curriculum?
It really wouldn't.
You wouldn't need more of that?
They've already chosen a three-year integrated model, so they are already teaching science six, seven, eight.
We wouldn't be affecting what they're doing.
No, I was thinking more about them preparing for you.
Absolutely, that will be a natural progression because of the piloting and things that we have going on. That will. That will actually bolster and make, hopefully, things go much stronger and in greater depth.
Right.
Yeah, it is the problem right now. I mean, you've got K6 adoption of curriculum, K8, you know, and they, that's a curriculum that's supported by the state and put out by the state, here's what you can choose from. They don't do that for high school. So now you have, you know, people choosing curriculum K8, and we are looking at lots of different things. But they're all, the publishers are all looking at this and saying, what do we write? Who's gonna go with what? And NGSS was not accepted across all 50 states.
No.
Which is what they predicted, you know, everybody's gonna go with this and then everybody will publish it. Well, it wasn't. It's 19 states or something, right? So the publishers said, I don't know, we're not gonna support this until somebody decides what you're doing. Are you doing two years? Are you doing integrated? Are you doing three years? You're gonna stick with the four-year model? Why are we gonna put out stuff until you're ready? So that was kind of part of what brought this conversation up. It's like, most of us felt like we would be willing to pilot some things, but we didn't want to have to spend money on curriculum materials that weren't gonna meet our needs, and we didn't know what our needs were. Are we gonna go with a three-year model? Is anybody gonna support that? So that's what we're here to present, is we would all like- To support. -a three-year model. Because it would let us do, you know, what we need to do. So right now, there are two years of science required to graduate from high school, one year of life when you're a physical. That's what the state of California requires as a minimum. For some students, that means they take physical at Petaluma, earth at Casa, it's still called physical, whatever they're taking, and then biology, and they're done. So they're missing some things. For others, they're skipping that physical earth part and taking biology and then chemistry. So now they have no earth science. So our, some of our elective teachers are saying they come into marine science, or they come into anatomy physiology, or they come into AP environmental science, and they have no earth science background. So they aren't able to do marine science, they aren't able to do AP environmental science, because they missed that. So students who skip that are not only at a disadvantage with the state test, which is not the sole goal of this, but they have to take a junior year test. So they're at a disadvantage because they've had no earth and space science. My honors chemistry students this year complained bitterly about how much earth science was on the cast test, right? They've done biology, they've done chemistry, and they don't, I don't remember what a plate tectonic is. Great, because they did it in sixth grade or something. So they've missed it, and there are no guarantees right now that all students get all standards. Some students get this, and some get this, and some get some of that. So they're all taking the same integrated test, and great. We have also a sort of weird thing here in Petaluma called the math-science-related category. But nobody's quite sure what that is. And it's 10 credits toward the 220 to graduate. And it seems to be causing issues with even the data that Cliff and I were trying to collect in this last month, about is that a math course, or is it a science course, or what is it? Does it fit this criteria or that criteria? So this is where we started?
So here are the numbers that we're looking at currently. We have some adjustment down at the bottom of that with, again, our course descriptions are by the course handouts, and whether a box is checked or not, so things get counted or not counted on any given time. So you'll see the second set of numbers on the two boxes at this point out there. A difference of 49% to 80% was after a recalculation of classes according to how they were-
Listed in areas.
Listed in areas. And so when you go in and look at it, it's quite different.
So originally, we were given these numbers, that at Casa, 49% of the students are enrolled in science, and at Petaluma, 68% are enrolled in science. When we went back and looked with a query by the counselors at Casa for anything called science, there was, there were 80% of the students enrolled, and at Petaluma, there were 77%. We knew where these kids were. The AP environmental science class was not being counted as a science class. AP environmental science. So the use of statistics, and I didn't adjust all of them, sorry, I ran out of time doing AP testing and things like that. But, you know, overall, we have, you know, well over 70% of our juniors taking three years of science already. They already do that of their own volition. And so that was kind of what brought this whole issue up about, well, why, if they're already doing it, then it's not gonna cause a big disruption in anybody's schedule to make it a requirement.
And then this is showing where they were, if they weren't taking a science, where are they? And that's where you look at that math and science related. 19% are there. The CTE courses, which could be something like sports med, which is kind of a science, is also very high. So again, when we look at the numbers, you might find that those are actually going up. So that would actually balance off where the concern would be of where the kids would come from, to be able to take this, that it wouldn't be taken away from other courses as much.
So this, these are the same numbers about in this class called math-science-related, right? And so this is a big problem that we kind of need to look into. It could be wildlife, it could be business math, it could be accounting, it could be auto-engineering. Almost anything is called math-science-related. So we were trying to look at what are our concerns, what are the unintended consequences of moving to this three-year requirement? Are there aspects that would open up possibilities for students that they don't currently have? Does it impact different student populations? And how can we provide for all students not only access, but opportunity for success? One of the concerns Cliff had brought up was that maybe this would cause less graduation, because it would be more difficult, every day science is so hard. The next-generation science folks have done a big study on students with disabilities and how the hands-on approach of these courses are more successful, as you were hearing from the alt-ed kids. Being involved, building things, making more science and technology available makes it more interesting. They're actually more successful than just having the sort of traditional bookworm.
And when they're, by the time we've had the younger grades having more, they will truly have the background to go forward. And if we keep our expectations reasonable but high, they will come up to meet them.
So these were Cliff's numbers, and he asked me to check on them for this year, and I don't have the access to do that. So, but based on what, what key mind for me, this is, these are the number of sections that would have to be added. So at Casa, it would be six sections. At Petaluma High, it would be three. And at the alt-ed sites, it would be two sections of science. Credentialing is obviously an issue to look at who's teaching what. I spoke to the Nevada TOSA, who said they got around some of that by the way they defined the courses. And so they were able to match their credentialing with the way they designed the courses. NGSS is pretty much saying you can design the courses any way you want, with the goal of making sure every student gets every standard.
And those numbers will definitely change since we did have the change in percentage, so how to develop.
So these are the credentials. I won't bother going through them, but I've put them in the presentation, so you can look at them and see what was going on. The biggest issue is the geosciences credential is sort of being phased out, and you have to have something else as well if you have a geoscience credential. So that's kind of an issue. So if we could get approval for changes to graduation requirement to include a third year of science, we'd have to get together and start choosing a course sequence? What are we gonna offer first? What are we gonna offer second? In Santa Rosa, they did this, and they have, they designed the first-year course, and they're designing it one year at a time. So their teachers met and designed the first-year course, and now they're gonna design the second-year course, et cetera, to include that engineering and technology component, as well as to include all the standards. In Nevada, they kind of did a shopping list kind of thing, where here are all the standards, and you can take any of these three courses, within this list, you'll get all the standards. Or you can take within this list and get all the standards, or within this list. So they kind of did this interesting.
The students chose.
And the students are choosing.
The students are choosing.
But so the teachers align the courses. If you're gonna teach your course, you have to meet these standards, and these courses meet these standards. And then the students can pick, one from column A, one from column B, kind of thing.
But regardless of what we do, it's a matter of looking at it in a holistic way of thinking. Three years, what's best for our students? And coming up with the courses in alignment with the publishers, as well, we can't put the carpet for the course, and it all needs to blend together, and it's not something we implement immediately. It's something we need to plan for, to get everything in alignment. And come up with a catalog for the, when the freshmen come in, then they know what's in place. It's not something you're gonna smack in front of a junior and say, by the way, next year you're going to take in four years of science. So it's a process.
So Nevada started this year with their freshman class, so they'll be taking a three-year graduation requirement to graduate from Nevada in science. And so they're taking a course called Living Earth, that is a biology course with some earth science involved.
And how have they, how, how has a school like the Vado district dealt with the impact under the programs?
They said that they're, they had no argumentation about setting it up. Their board was supportive, their principals were supportive. They're getting a little pushback now from what Cliff asked of me about math. Our math teachers are not pushing back. They're not saying we want three years of math required to graduate from high school. There had, they had some of that in Nevada. They have, of course, some pushback from the elective programs. But they didn't have the 10 required units of math-science that we have. And it feels to me like if we could get people who are in that category to decide, are you a science class? If you're a science class, then you can meet some of these standards, and students can still be enrolled in your class.
So is there, is there a curriculum for math-science? I mean-
No.
That seems very odd to me.
It's a, it's a very weird thing, but only, only Petaluma City Schools has a catalog.
And it can not work from dropping to, or not, a statistics class to a CTE-based course? It is truly a math-science something, and as long as it qualifies.
Has some math, has some science, maybe has one, maybe has the other, so.
Would it have to go through A through G?
The math-science?
The math-science does not have to go through?
No, no, no. But if they were going to switch?
Well, nothing has to go through A to G. You don't have to make it worse. No. It doesn't have to be. A to G is a UC deal, but-
So they're just not considered?
They may, they're, they're probably not on the A to G.
They just have to get the magic stamp of approval.
Right. They just have to submit a proposal for a course.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be?
No, you can have classes in high school that are not A to G.
No, no, I understand that.
So it turns out the reason that AP environmental science is not considered a science course, but it's considered a math-science-related course, is because when the proposal was sent to the board, that's the box that got checked. So if somebody would uncheck on the box, no, it's on the piece of paper.
I told you.
No. So I think the reason that it happened is because it's an integrated course, and we don't have a box that says integrated science. So because the teacher who submitted the proposal couldn't decide if it was a physical science or a life science-
Which were the only two science options.
Which were the only two options. They checked math-science-related, because it is related. But that's gonna be fixed.
It's June 6th, that's gonna be.
Right?
No, physics is a physical science, so there's a box.
There's math, there's math.
But it's not, we don't have to check that box.
Okay.
So this, the AP will be fixed this summer, because they have to resubmit an audit to the college board, because the AP curriculum changed, so they have to resubmit their course anyway.
Redo their audit?
Always. Like almost every couple, year, every year, Victor's here. How often did you have to do physics?
Fifteen pages.
I, it seemed like four.
Four or five times? I mean, it's long, and it takes a lot of time.
I know.
It's like five months.
I know.
There are fifteen pages.
Yeah, it's, yeah, so they have to do it every time they change a standard. You have to submit a new course audit. So here, we have to submit it, and to you also, because we have to give it a new course number.
Okay. All right, you'll be getting that.
So you'll be seeing that in the fall, for AP environmental science, whatever you decide about this. But we would like to ask you to look into, to think about, to bring open for more discussion. This is a presentation, but perhaps we would be happy to come back to the board for discussion when you have more questions about this. It is, it's gonna, there's gonna be some pushback from electives about, we're already having pushback to Petaluma about how many electives.
That's a concern, for me, anyway, as to the topic.
But I think you've had 20 units already that are specified. Students must take a course called math-science-related, and you just simply make that science? 10 units, 10, 10.
10.
Thank you. 10 units of science instead of math-science-related, right?
You should solve that problem.
You should solve, yeah. And I don't know the whole list of electives that are in that category.
Okay.
And textbooks? What about the textbooks?
Well, they're not, I don't know.
Well, the problem is the textbooks are talking about, are you gonna teach two, three, or four years of science? So we feel like being asked to choose textbooks when we don't know the answer to the question is a waste of resources.
Well, and the ones that came in?
No.
Some of them are, and some of them are, the ones that came here, and we had a meeting here, and did things, they did have the first one written in the draft of the living earth in the universe. And it was going into publish, they hoped to have it completed by July, and when they completed that one, they were working on the next one. So at that time, the discovery did not have them completed, but they were in the process.
Same two companies that they're piloting at the elementary in January.
Okay. Discovery is one of them.
Could you reiterate for me why it would have to result in a change in the graduation requirement? That's the part that I'm not catching.
Wouldn't have to, but currently, we only have two years of science required. So we have 30% of our students who do not take all the standards, because they don't take science their third year.
And the standards have been approved by California, therefore, we are expected to-
The standards are driving this?
It's absolutely. And the only way to accomplish that is a minimum of three years.
They drove the requirements for- Same issue you have with mathematics.
Right.
Mathematics, they have a three-year program sequence.
Right.
And, but they're two-year requirement.
Right.
But we have more students, something like 90%, who take three years of math.
Sure.
Now.
Math is a problem.
Because the UCs and the CSU's, you know, so it sort of also depends what are the colleges requesting, right? And the colleges also don't push the sciences hard. I mean, I've been teaching for 40 years, so I've seen three cycles of this. And 15 years ago, when we had the last standards, it was the same thing. Are you supposed to teach 187 physical science standards in one year? And that's what they presented. And in California, we actually have a two-year science requirement. In other states, the requirement is less than that. It's a year or three semesters. And so it's even more difficult to try and really prepare a student to be an educated science person. You know, enough, enough science to make the decisions they need to make in the world today.
So I just wanted to add, the math thing is, it's close, but not exactly the same, because you can accelerate on the math track in eighth grade.
Right.
So you're already getting one of the three years that's gonna be tested junior year, potentially your beltwork.
It's in science.
You're starting, you're starting high school, right, ground zero, trying to get all three full courses.
So I guess my main concern is the opportunity cost of what a student won't be taking if they take the third year of science. And just, particularly the CTE that, I mean, because that was, it looked like the biggest component.
Well, that's also interesting in the way these statistics came about, because we have CTE-science. So what is being counted in this list of CTE? And when I asked, we, it's still not clear. So I'm, I'm not happy with these statistics, because when I went digging into this for the last three weeks, I'm not convinced about what we're actually talking about here. So what is CTE?
And we're, well, we're, we're looking for students to go through the three, a three-year course pathway, ideally if they're in a CTE program. And that's very specifically laid out for what that is. So showing your college or career readiness, you could show it in an academic track, or you could show it going through a CTE course pathway track.
That would meet the science?
That would meet the requirements for college and career read and-
And science, because we have bio and community health, we have chemistry and community health, we have anatomy and physiology, so we have a three-year science pathway.
Think they were going through the health and the science pathway.
Right, and it's quite possible that those CTE courses would be able to cover the same standards, and that, as you said, it's already a three-year course.
We, you know, you, the, the challenges are, it's, it's diminishing resources. It's, that's, you know, you're looking at 11 sections that are displaced. Just two years ago, when we were considering just getting rid of two sections of auto-shop, the boardroom was packed.
I was.
With 100-plus parents, say, to the auto-shop program. And that's the program, those, I mean, it, so it's a, everything that they've shared is a real, is a real issue related to science. And so we need to have this conversation related to, at a much bigger scale, related to, you know, where ultimately do we wanna, we wanna be? Because it's, one, we don't wanna have an unintended consequence that leads to folks showing up en masse, because we're not serving the kids.
And that's why we want the discussion, the conversation to take place.
And these sections were based before we adjusted these percentages. So the sections that Cliff presented were based on only 49% of the students at Casa being enrolled in science, and it turns out there's probably more like 80?
Right.
So the, yeah, the data's not clear.
Well, I just counted off the 183. That's not enrolled in science. That's all the-
That's, but that is subtracted either. We need a bottom line there.
Because if you look at this, at the 80%, the 27 out of the 359, you've only got 72 students.
Here, it's two sections.
Perhaps part of the discussion needs to be a counselor who does scheduling, just 'cause that would maybe-
Well, the counselor gave us the numbers that don't match.
We need some clerical.
This is my, this is my concern. It may- It may turn out we need to review how these courses are being listed. Because I'm not kidding, I spent a lot of hours trying to figure out where these numbers came from. And I'm not, it's just very unclear.
How long have these classes been in, been in place?
Which ones?
And that's related.
In math science, similar, they've been there for.
Longer than they. A long time. I think twenty-five plus.
At least.
I mean, I think it's been there as long as I've been, a couple of months, I've been there twenty-five.
I think it's more likely to forty years.
So just, just to clarify how the, how the data gets pulled. So the, the data we pulled was courses that are tagged as science. If you've, if you've fulfilled science registration requirement, there's another category. Then it might be, may be elective, it may be math-science related, then it may be elective. So the, the one we gave was pure science. So we did find AP Environmental Science not included in that. It's in the math-science related. That was one of those where it's come from. Okay, two thousand and ten, when it was submitted, it was submitted that way, it's just existed that way. There are a couple of CTE courses that are science-like, right? Environmental conservation, sports medicine, right? So those weren't counted in the science, right? So there's a, there's a few, we weren't able to determine the query that the CASA counselor provided. We reached out, weren't able to clarify where, where do you get those two eighty-seven from? If it's, if it's by science category, it was our number. So was he throwing in the other one? So, so to get a clean number on exactly who's in science, we need to do a little more work. But you can see, it's, it is a large percentage.
I think the, the issue is, you know, when you look under science, everybody has to have two years of science. So once you've done two years of science, nothing else counts as science. Now it's an elective.
Even if it's straight physics.
Now it's under, yeah, another category. Well, not even G on the, the college board, because these are still D courses. So this is, has nothing to do with the A to G UC. This is how Petaluma High decide, or Petaluma City Schools decides whether students have met the graduation requirements. So you only need two years of science to graduate from high school. Once you've fulfilled that, every other science you take goes in a different column.
So if, if we did require three years of science and a kid was taking sports medicine, would that count as their third year?
Well, that's what we're gonna have.
That's what we have to say, you know?
Yeah. And, and.
Because you already have kids doing that already.
Right, and we don't wanna destroy that.
Yeah, this wouldn't change anybody who's there. And it would be a reach out to those people and say, if you wanna continue to have sports medicine count as a science class, then you need to meet these standards. Here's NGSS, these kids have to take this test. Put these standards in what you're teaching.
So in that particular instance, they would use structure and function, which is one of the cross-selling cancer, and they would bring that in. And that would then cover that.
That's how they're doing it in Nevada with their electives. That's the A, B, C column. They've just told everybody who teaches a class, you have to meet, if you want to be in column A, you have to meet these standards. If you're in column B, you meet these standards. So if this is earth and this is life and this is physical science, you can have your elective be in that column, but we're holding you accountable for those standards so that when the student's done with those three years, they've met all their science standards. NGSS is not really content-driven, it's process, it's bigger picture items. So you can teach it in many, many ways without having to do a traditional chemistry class. I mean, there, I'm a chemistry teacher, right? That's my degree. So most people that I know who teach chemistry are scared to death because they look at this and go, there's no chemistry. But it's there, it's just blended into every other topic. And so you have to recognize that it's there and how to teach it.
But that would just be a way to deal with the elective situation?
Right. It wouldn't be that they have to go away. It would be that they'd have to recognize those standards that they're already currently teaching.
Cool. Okay, so do you know what other districts in the counties are sort of three-year?
Santa Rosa's talking about it. They are doing a three-year development, but they haven't talked about changing their graduation requirements. Nevada has changed their graduation requirements, it's done. Tampa Pies District, which is in our county, but has also gone to a three-year science requirement. I don't know about Rancho Caltari or Amelie. But Santa Rosa has, is going to design three years of science and hope that enough people take the third year of course, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Moving on, we have comments from the public. And before we start, I have two speaker cards. Before we start, I would like to read the requirements of, of the speakers. Under Government Code Section, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. In accordance with court policy, each speaker is allotted a total of four minutes to address the board for a maximum of twenty minutes on each subject matter. These are both different subjects, so that each speaker will have four minutes. While the upper branch of government called the last speakers to criticize the district policies, procedures, programs, services, and our employees, the district does have a current policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. The board does not take action or discuss items not appearing on the agenda. The board values public comments and wishes to convey that all board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda. They listen carefully and appreciate and value input from the public. So, our first speaker is Gina Pritzel. Pritzel?
I told him ask her your name.
Okay. I'm just, um, good evening. I am back again. I'm gonna kind of rewind because Mr. Jen was not here when I spoke a couple of weeks ago. I am the bilingual resource teacher at McDowell Elementary. I've been there nine years, I've been a bilingual resource teacher for two of them now. Previously to that, I was at McKinley. And I'm in about my twenty-fifth year of teaching. And to give you a little background on McDowell, Thursday's our open house. I hope you guys can all come by. It's an amazing place, incredible families and kids and students working so hard. And I hope you all have an opportunity to really get to know that incredible learning environment. Little details on, on our population, ninety-three percent of our families are low-income families. Eighty percent of them are English learners. Ten percent are homeless. We are a very high means population. And, but we're still incredibly motivated and resilient place. But we are under assault over there from our neighbors across the street. And the health and safety and welfare of everyone at that campus is at risk. And I know the district has taken some measures to address this. And there's been a lot going on with the city. I've been in effort to try to communicate with you. I know you guys spoke about something in closed session that you can't discuss with me. But I feel like, and we feel like, the door's been closed. And I'm here on behalf of the hundreds of students and teachers and family members in, in our community. And they don't have the luxury of paying for childcare beginning this evening. But, you know, we have hundreds and hundreds of signatures to oppose this, to this project. And our, our community is frightfully, just paralyzed. They don't know what to do. And we still, we are feeling abandoned. It was on September twelfth where Chris Thomas wrote a letter to the city expressing what the cities, I mean, the district's consultants had identified a number of failings in Safeway's health risk assessment and requesting that environmental impact control be done. Sadly, the city caved to the pressure of lawsuit and okayed the project, much to the dismay of, of everyone in the McDowell community and in that entire neighborhood. But there are still things happening. There's a lawsuit in the works. People are pitching in. I have forked over several hundred dollars out of my own pocket, as have many of our teachers at McDowell and the families who don't have money to be putting into the lawsuit. But we really feel that you need to do your part. I understand that you had some sort of consultation from your legal team. And I know you can't go into the details of that with me, but I do think that you can find a way to do something because we have no idea what the plan is. And not only, I, I, in addition to the health risk, this, this school's gonna fall apart if this project goes through, let me tell you right now. I, I will not stay there. And it took us years to find a bilingual resource teacher, which was probably one of the most important roles at that site with eighty percent ELs. And it will take more years to replace that role. But I can't, I cannot make that sacrifice to my family and myself. So I am asking you to reconsider a contribution to the legal fund. The, the lawsuit is in order, a writ of mandate is before a judge right now. But the fund is only half full in order to just pay the legal costs. We have a lawyer who's going pro bono. It's not gonna be absorbing a lot of money. It's very frustrating, I have to stop here, but.
Well, finish your sentence.
Well, I probably have two more minutes. Can you just, with four, two speakers, can you give me two more minutes? I'll hurry.
Okay.
Thank you, I really appreciate it. The, there's only about half the money that we, that we need to, to wrap it up and, and pay all the legal fees. Otherwise, it's, it's gonna come out of my pocket and, and it's, it's not right. So we need more transparency, we need to hear from the board members. The, the community needs to know what the plan is if this is not stopped. But right now, it feels like the door's been shut, there's no communication. We are out there on our own floating on a raft with no oars. And we need your support and we need to know you got our back. And we need that lawsuit to, to go all the way through. So, thank you.
Thank you, Gina.
Sandra Larson, adult education.
Hello, I'm Sandra Larson, president of PFT, resident of Petaluma, teacher, yes. Grandmother, I'll keep going. I have something to read to you tonight. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the disparity between the value of the work that adult educators do for our district and how they are compensated. Years of no salary increases for adult ed educators, which was from two thousand and nine to two thousand and sixteen, may be one cause of this discrepancy. The district made significant moves to address this issue last year, and we are grateful. However, we believe that it will take a great deal more of work to get our adult educators up to the wage that is comparable even to other adult educators in this area. Their hourly rate, which tops out around thirty-six dollars, is lower than neighboring districts, adult ed districts. This makes it difficult to recruit and retain qualified individuals to teach in the program. Here are just a few ways that adult ed contributes to the success of everyone in our district. There are no barriers to adults continuing their education in Petaluma because the adult school offers free English, naturalization, and high school equivalency classes, along with free parking, high-quality free childcare during class. Adults' only other alternative in Sonoma County is the junior SR, the junior college, which charges for parking and doesn't offer help, childcare. Adult educators teach parents a wide variety of skills and tools to support their children in school, the importance of nutrition, regular checkups, setting limits on screen time, that is okay, getting adequate sleep, reading to children daily and volunteering in their children's classrooms. They help Petaluma City School parents set up portal accounts, navigate areas, and fill out applications for special programs like PACS. They refer parents of children with special needs to community nonprofits such as Matrix for support and further education of their child's needs. One enterprising adult ed teacher heard campus stories of adults needing a few hundred dollars to pay a bill and avoid losing their housing. So she wrote grants and fundraised on her own time to create an emergency fund. Friends of the FRC, now many Petaluma City Schools family can apply for a small amount to pay for things like a utility bill, car repair, or extra food, diapers, formula, following a sudden loss. These small amounts kept Petaluma School families in their homes and from moving out of the city and our district. That's just a brief snapshot of the work our colleagues do. And although PFT adult educators hold clear California credentials, just like their PFT TK through twelve colleagues, they are paid at a much lower rate than TK twelve teachers. Now, teachers in a TK twelve classroom are contracted and their pay is based on a yearly certificate and salary schedule. Adult educators are paid on an hourly rate based on their salary schedule, since the majority of teachers in this bargaining unit do not teach full-time. However, we believe their salaries should be brought up to be at least competitive with the other adult schools and eventually to PFT teachers. The bottom line is both providing valuable service to students. Furthermore, there are two full-time adult ed administrators whose salaries are based on the Petaluma City Schools administrator salary schedule. And there is no discrepancy in their salaries, and we're not trying to change that. The executive board of the Petaluma Federation of Teachers, eighteen eighty-one, has approved this message of support for adult education colleagues. We understand the need for a significant salary increase for their unit, and we will in no way tie our salary negotiations to theirs.
Thank you, Sandra. And Erin, art in elementary.
Erin's fired, but I'm going to be quick. Erin, thank you, ma'am. I've been at art over at Kettleworth for twenty-six years. I've been taught before that and study year as well. So I've been hanging out with the art programs and kicking the whole area for quite a while. And I just wanted to remind everybody that, yes, everything that was said tonight by our art district coordinator is absolutely true. I want to remind people that we also need credentials for art teachers in our schools, especially in the elementary. It's super important. And I, I took a little chasing there at the no experience needed part as an art teacher. I value volunteers. And if they're fully benefited from the program, absolutely. But there's a lot more than visual arts, we have dance and music and theater going on that are not happening hardly at all in grade schools right now, minimally. But we could be doing so much more. And they are a huge part of competency and all the things that we learn. I know that we can do much more because I have students come to me in Junior High sometimes. I had this once. And he said, oh, I've used this book before, an art textbook. And I said, oh, honey, you must have gone to school out of state. And he said, yeah, how'd you know? So, I mean, there are these whole other programs out there. We need to make sure we keep that in mind when we're talking about what we present to our schools. And I want to make sure that we, we work as unified front to get that going.
Thank you, Erin. Okay. Reporting activities and correspondence with school board members. We've been busy, McKinley site visit, Petaluma High School play, which was amazing, Petaluma Arts Breakfast, Petaluma Junior High School Open House, Mentor Me site visit, Eastside Realize, Gateway College, SRJC, San Antonio Open House, FFA Dinner, Crossroads Open House, Valley Vista Open House, Pen Grove Open House, Adult Ed Site Visit. So, and now we move on to the approval of the consent agenda by consolidated motion.
I'm going to approve everything on the consent agenda.
Okay, are there any, anything, any issues? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, cool. Boy, that just cruised us right down to action items. Administrative Resources Resolution eighteen nineteen dash twenty of the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School District honoring the contributions of classified school employees to quality education and declaring the week of May twentieth, June twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen as a Classified School Employees Week, although every week should be their week.
Yes. Enthusiastically, I.
Do I have a motion?
Moved.
I'll show my leg.
Our schools wouldn't function and we wouldn't be here without our classified staff. It's an integral part of our, of our schools and we need to, I think it's just a nice, it's a nice, we do it every year at this sort of time. Sometimes it's kind of combined with the, some schools do staff appreciation where everyone is together. But this is sort of the national time when it's, when it's recognized as so.
So did we have a motion in a second?
Daddy, is a motion.
Oh, national.
I made the motion. I, I beat.
So just seconds, someone.
He seconded.
Oh, I didn't hear you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next. Oh, that's our only action item. Discussion information only. Williams settlement, third quarter report for two thousand and eighteen nineteen, visit and review of McKinley School.
They didn't, they, they reported every quarter, but there is no visit, so nothing to report.
Which is, we like that. We like that a lot.
One thing off your plate is.
Yeah, exactly, especially with Williams. Okay, Business Services, delete admin regulation, AR zero four two zero point four charter schools. And these are kind of all together, so I'll just.
That's what we talked about last time.
The first two, these were just, this was one administrative break that was not included last time. But it's the same information, which is, we're deleting the two thousand and two administrative break and updating it for the. and updating it for the laws that have changed based on the CSBA administrative break.
Perfect.
There is a question.
Not a point.
Questions or comments? Okay.
Sad it took seventeen years to change.
Yes, well.
That's my only comment.
Amendment board policy, first reading for BP three five one eight point three, tobacco-free schools.
So we have been reviewing all of our tobacco-free board policies, and this is one of them. I don't know if you want to share anything more than that, but it's really bringing it again up to date with all the latest regulations regarding tobacco-free use. It does talk about a funding source, TOPE Tobacco Use Prevention Education Grant, which we don't receive and haven't received in some time.
I thought we had something from, for the school resource officers.
We have the Department of Justice grant.
Oh, is that what that is?
And that's really a local grant that we have through the Department of Justice. But this, this board policy actually refers to TOPE, or I call it TOPE or not TOPE. So anyway, we haven't received those funding sources in a very long time. There was a federal funding source, Tobacco Prevention Education Grant.
Gary just put another TOPE grant on our radar that there's potential funding for the same Prop fifty-six money that's available. And one of the big reasons for the update is to make sure that we have, we've included the vape devices and the newer technology around these devices. And we have some, still some money in that Prop fifty-six grant to update the signage and have some more literature at the school sites as well.
Does the tobacco, does that include vape pens when we're talking tobacco-free? I mean.
It does include vaping devices, which, you know, like the Juul and the, the other types of devices. And Dave is absolutely right, as we're, as you just approved up above under consent, some contracts related to purchasing vape devices and installing the data connections that are necessary, the connectivity, which we're piloting across the ground as a first school.
We have a grant for that.
That's the grant funded the Department of Justice. This actually brings our board policy into covering much of that, what's gonna happen.
So having that kind of device in, in the bathrooms, we would need to amend our policies in order to make that okay.
Yeah, we want to have our, make sure the board policy is clear on what does that mean and how do we, how do we handle that.
Right.
I must say that when I read that initially, I'm going, we're gonna have vape devices in the bathrooms?
No.
Wow, okay, moving on.
I know, it's a way back.
It's true. You know, we revert to them as vape devices, but you're right. I see your point.
It's a sensor. So, and I apologize, I should have asked this during the consent agenda, but I just noticed that the vendor for those sensors is video, something video. I just want to say for the record, there's no videoing going on in the bathrooms.
The sensor, the contract is with, I think, Sonic for the purchase of the devices themselves. It's a different vendor. The video vendor was to provide the connectivity, none of the devices, so there's no video devices.
Thank you.
There's no video devices in bathrooms.
Which is typically related to more audiovisual kind of stuff. But in this particular case, it's gonna allow the communication from the vape detection devices to, to some sort of either phone or computer.
Thank you.
There won't not be any video.
No. Okay, educational services, first reading Pedaluma Joint Union High School District Course, Strength Training.
It's a PE elective option, juniors and seniors.
For seniors only?
No, juniors and seniors.
Juniors and seniors only.
So we have PE nine, PE ten. We do have some students that have been taking advantage of the PE exemption by playing two years of interscholastic sports and exempting out. Some kids take PE at the colleges. We haven't really seen our PE numbers affected that much, but our PE teachers wanted to offer, you know, another option for kids to stay and take PE at school, so.
How is this to get from weight training?
Strength training.
Well, it's strength training.
It's probably more stretch.
I mean, if someone's looking at what to take.
Yeah, I think if you, I think, look, I think this is a revision of.
I didn't see it on there. Oh, there it is, down there.
So, like, how much section?
Yeah, but there was no information on there. I did look.
Yeah.
There was no information on there.
Well, they're just.
It's a PE elective course, it is not college prep. It does not include PE ten course standards, it's elective. So what's the difference between that and weight training? Because don't we have weight training?
So I, I, we do, but I think this is a revision of weight training. If you, if you look at the actual.
And in strength training, the difference between strength training and weight training is that not all strength trainees are in weights. Some of them are resistance fans.
Yeah, the resistance fans.
So if you, we go into either of our weight rooms at either of our two conference high schools, there are lots of weights, but there are other ways to do strength trainings.
I know that that term.
Probably clarifying the difference.
The term, it's the kind of difference between foreign language and a world language. People are using it. The term weight training is very, is limited to typically to weights.
Oh, it's. Is it replacing?
Can we move on? Or do I? I want to know, but Gary was talking, you weren't listening, so.
So this is first reading, shall we bring back clarification for a second?
Yeah.
Well, I'm just, the only reason I'm asking is because we've been talking about electives and about three years of science of the, you know, replacing. If this is not, it says, does this course offer an alternative to an existing course? It says no, but it.
I think the strength training is expanding the weight training, so it's not just weights.
No, but it's, they're two different things.
That I couldn't tell.
That's what I'm asking.
Are there gonna be like multiple sections offered at site? Is this just at one school, like what?
Sorry, Gary, I didn't need to interrupt.
No, no, we can, we can find out. I guess probably, I'm looking at the course right now and it's not entirely clear to me whether it's the same course or not, because it uses weight training in the.
Yeah, it uses it, but it isn't saying it like.
I mean, no, I don't know if.
No, it's the same.
Weight training and conditioning talks about, so.
So then it won't meet the PE requirements for two years of.
It's a.
It's a non-college prep. So they, they meet their PE requirements in ninth and tenth grade.
Right, so this is.
It's just a, yeah, it's just an.
Which I think is great. I'd rather have kids doing that than taking a period off.
Well, it does say kids can take it at sophomores too, right? Like a teacher approval.
Yeah, I thought it said ten through twelve.
Is this just another way to get them to stay in PE for a year?
I wish they had offered strength training when I see.
Yeah.
Or weight training.
I'm, I'm not gonna infer into what there's, what, what it says. It says, but it does say you learn basic fundamentals of weight training, strength training, flexibility, and nutrition. Now, I don't know, we'd have to look at the course description of weight training and see if that's more exclusive just to weight training, just to weights. So, but we can find out.
So when it asks if you're replacing it, it's saying that we're still gonna have weight training and then add this, not replace strength training or weight training, right? Like this is not gonna replace that.
So they're trying to offer another option for.
Or the questions, do they just check them off?
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, they're.
Well, no, I mean, it could, it could be weight training hasn't been used in years.
Okay.
But right now, there's no weight training at all at Pedaluma High. I could check Casa. So could it, weight training could be an old course, it's no longer offered.
I think it sounds great, including nutrition.
It says here that it is the same as other PE.
Okay, I'm reading already. Or weight training courses.
Or weight training courses.
That's where it talks about CalPats course codes, so that's, that's a little different. So they're, they're trying to tell you that it's in the same category. So that's not the.
Yeah, I, I think it is something as an alternative.
Good question.
Maybe we can look at the forums next time.
We'll, we'll.
Correct the rest and out then.
Okay, future business.
Yeah, I'd like to propose or ask my colleagues to consider, will we consider our continued use of Safeway as a vendor for hospitality services? I noticed in our consent agenda that we paid roughly a thousand some hundred dollars in April in services from Safeway in light of community concerns about the gas station and what we just heard about the, from McDowell School. Maybe we should consider our future relationship with that.
We're happy to look into that.
Absolutely.
Can we maybe add a resolution?
I was just kind of looking around, I, I think you might.
Or does that open us up?
I would, I would say that we would, we could probably look into it and give you something via, address that it looks like there's.
We want to make sure there's a viable alternative first, before we, I mean.
Yes.
Well, there's lucky.
Well, I mean, we have a, it's, it's making sure that we can set something up so that they will work within our system.
Yeah, got it.
So it's not.
Accepting purchase orders and accepting those type of things.
Okay, we can get that back to them.
Okay, that would be great. Any else?
Okay, so I went to the SFA Project Competition Awards banquet last night. And because I went, I was actually a judge in the worst rain in, you know, in February to all these farms and ranches and so, I mean, it was just wonderful. And, and these kids are, you know, as they were saying, really fabulous. And I thought, why don't we bring them in at the next meeting and just recognize them?
Yeah.
You know, and then the other one would be the Gaucho Gazette, just because it's very close to my heart. But, you know, we can also have everybody that's ever done competitions. But, you know, they really, both of those groups of kids have just done stellar work, and I would love to see them and their teachers brought in and recognized. And I, we only have one meeting left, kind of for the.
So the only caution, the only caution I would put is that's the night of, night before final start. So if we did bring them in, you know, do something quick and short.
Well, they would just be like at the very beginning, like we do. Yeah.
Snap before finals?
They're seniors. No.
That's.
Finals are important.
No, 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 I flip it.
Is that, if that, if you don't want, I mean, this is something, I guess, for future business to discuss. I mean.
Well, no, it, it, we could do that. I just, I'm aware that they're getting ready for finals, it's the end of May, it's close to prom.
The problem with half waiting is that they won't be here.
No, I understand that, there's a lot of seniors.
How about I'll, I'll reach out, we'll reach out to them and see if, if they, they, they come each year usually. Athena doesn't usually bring the Gaucho Gazette each year, but Kim has a presentation with her officer. She did one earlier in the year. But we could see if they would, if, if specifically recognizing.
Well, the winners, like there are only, so the thing was the project competition winners. And there are like ten, not even, no, there, there are seven.
Okay.
And then the Gaucho Gazette, I hope, because it's a whole class.
The Pedaluma, the Pedaluma High School.
And the Pedaluma got some too, yeah.
So if we're gonna do one, we should do both.
We should do both. Because I think in Pedaluma, it was one of the first times. They, they've gotten that kind of recognition. I mean, they've won kind of sporadically.
Both newspapers and both schools made the top ten.
I would say, I, I would say that with, with the, one other option, if it's not that, is we actually go out to the, to their class.
Yeah.
That would be just as meaningful, might be probably maybe even more meaningful for them.
Oh, that would be cool.
That would be perfect.
Because not a lot of people are, I, I'm sorry, community television, but not a lot of people are watching this. But they.
So then we would just go, I wonder how.
Athena's is easy to do and Kim's happy to get them together. Gary does try and just all go over very much and she'll, she'll invite. So why don't I give them that option and we'll see what, what works.
It's just Mesa.
Well, and we're gonna have a student of the month also. That's the other one, right?
And May, yes.
Yeah, so it's gonna be a lot if we.
Yeah, I would rather go there.
Yeah.
It'd be really fun to go there.
Yeah. We should go there, I'll Skype in.
Okay, signing of papers. Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped, I kind of jumped ahead. Is there anywhere for future business? I don't want to cut you guys off. Are we good? Okay.
I did, I did want to share, you guys have requested that the Justice League group in Casa come back and present. So they're, they're declining for this school year.
Understand.
They do want to come back, they just.
Finally.
A lot would go on.
It's like the hundred days of May. Okay, so are we ready to hear the?
Oh, yeah.
Ready? Right? Papers, okay, here we go. Case number thirty-nine, a case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Ed Code. This recommend a motions for board to expel and to suspend the site discipline teams. Recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in the district-operated school under mandated conditions. The student suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the fall and spring semester of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-two school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive and satisfactory behavior, substance abuse counseling program, and screenings, community service, and appropriate academic performance. So moved.
Clarification, this isn't supposed to be in closed session?
No, we didn't say any names.
No, we don't say names, it's just cases. Good question, but yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Case number forty, the case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Ed Code. This, the recommended motions for the board to expel him, to suspend the site discipline teams, recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy, and to allow continued enrollment in district-operated school under mandated conditions. The student suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the fall and spring semesters of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-two school year. Conditions above, subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, substance abuse counseling program, and screenings, community service, and appropriate academic performance. I move to accept that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, two more. Case number forty-one. Okay. What? I'm trying to do it different, each one a little bit different. Get my drama stuff out there. This has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Ed Code. The recommended motion is for the board to expel and to suspend the site discipline teams. Recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in a district-operated school under mandated conditions. The student suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the fall and spring semesters of the two thousand nineteen, twenty-two school year. Conditions above, subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, substance abuse counseling program, and screenings, community service, and appropriate academic performance.
So moved.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Case number forty-two, last but never least. A case has been presented to the board that the student committed an expellable act as defined by the California Ed Code. The recommended motion is for the board to expel and to suspend the site discipline teams. Recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in a district-operated school under mandated conditions. The student's suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the fall and spring semesters of the twenty, of the two thousand nineteen, twenty-two school year. Conditions above, subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, substance abuse counseling program, and screenings, community service, and appropriate academic performance. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And.
I'm just thinking, there's an, the FFA Awards banquet is Thursday night. At seven o'clock. I know that we're all going to like a casino and open houses.
I'm going to on that day.
But it's at the Els Lodge. Is it seven? Oh, it's, oh, you can't go on Thursday? Okay. Yeah. It's a little quick. I was just thinking maybe we could do that.
Okay. And we are journeying.
We're journeying to closed session, but we have nothing to report of.
Okay.